Good evening. I'll introduce myself. I'm Adam Cummings, the chairman of tonight's meeting, and will call this meeting to order as a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chi-Lai Zoning Board of Appeals. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you for that. And board members tonight, we have Jim Weisner on my left, Mark Mary is excused tonight, Fred Trot is on my immediate right, Philip Supernell is on my far right. Side table, we have Paul Wanzanreid from the Building Department, and Matthew Piston is our Assistant Town Council. Filling in for our stenographer, Sandy Hewlett, tonight is Holly from our temp agency. I don't remember your last name, Holly.
Castleman.
Castleman, so she is our stenographer tonight, so thank you for that. For procedure tonight, we'll hear each application as they appear on the order on the agenda. If you'd like a copy of the agenda, it is on the roller cart in the back of the room. And at the conclusion of each public hearing, the board will have a discussion and a vote on the application. And the applicant will receive a letter of our decision, whichever we go from the Building Department within a week. I do have to point out, in the event of an emergency, we have our exits. For the emergency exits is straight back from the room, or the doors you entered the room. The back doors go into the same hallway, and the side doors go to the outside. I do have to ask, if you have a cellphone or a pager, please turn it off or silence it, just to prevent any interruptions. And we'll move on to board. Any discussions on the signs? Fred and I just discussed it. 38 Christina. I did not see it out there.
I didn't see it.
But I was going to ask Paul. Paul, did you hand out the sign to 38 Christina Drive? Okay.
Was that a nod of the head?
That was a nod of the head. I think we can still move forward with it. It was on the agenda. But I'll leave it up to the board unless you guys want to delay it for missing that sign. Unless, Phil, or you said you didn't see it?
I did not see it.
I didn't see it.
Do you know, did they post the...
I do not know. That may be a compounding error on our fault. It may have come from us and one of the junior engineers in the office may have forgotten to post it. If that is the case, I do apologize and understand.
So, council, if they didn't put the sign up, is that a failure for public notification with our town code? I didn't, I think we've run into that before.
Yeah, it's not. They have to, the failure to maintain, or if it blows down, that's one thing, but not...
They never put it out.
No, I was going to say, not posting it is a completely different thing, so.
Right.
It'll probably have to be re-tabled.
I agree. Because we have had that a few times, where it at least is handed out from the Building Department, and then it does get posted, or if it gets wind-blown, or the rain washes it out, or someone decides to take it. We've had that a few times. But if it hasn't been posted at all by the applicant, then, once we get to that one, we'll discuss it in more detail. Moving on, we'll go to application number one, the application of Daniel Farrell, 49 Evergreen Drive, Rochester, New York, 14624, the applicant owner for a variance to erect an addition, 24 feet 0 inches by 26 feet 0 inches attached garage, proposed to be 7.9 feet on the side setback where 10 foot 0 inches is required at the property located at 49 Evergreen Drive in the R-1-15 district. Holly, did you get a copy of this agenda?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, this applicant, the same goes with any other applicant, as you come up to the podium, say your name and address for the record and the stenographer, and anything else you'd like to add to the description of this application?
I'm Daniel Farrell, 49 Evergreen Drive.
All right.
Yep, I'm just going to get, everybody just cares about the sheet, so we'll get to
that. That's the one you're looking to do?
Yes, sir.
And it's the addition over here?
Yes.
On the north side of the building, correct? So, once again, we're here discussing, it's supposed to be 10 feet, it's at 7.9 feet. Jim, any questions?
So, it would appear that you're probably the only one in that neighborhood without a garage, or from my assessment?
There's one other house in the neighborhood without a garage. So, we exist.
You're in the minority, let's say that.
Okay. Fred, any questions?
No questions.
Phil?
No questions.
Side table, anything to add?
No.
All right. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to talk about this one application? Not seeing any hands. Ask for motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that carried. One condition of approval for this is you will have to get a building permit. You've already started that process. You got denied here, so just continue on with that process with the Building Department, whichever direction we go.
How soon can I get this approved?
If it gets approved tonight, you can go there tomorrow. But we haven't voted yet, so I don't want to say whether it's approved or not. I'm left-handed. I write slower than most. All right. So now, with that, I'll declare the zoning board as lead agency and find this application be a type 2 action and of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval.
So moved.
We have a motion from Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Board vote. Jim?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so you can go there tomorrow. They'll have the decision letter sometime tomorrow, but you can go there and proceed with it.
All right.
Thank you. Yes, you're all set. All right, moving on to application two. If I pronounce it wrong, I'm sorry, but...
It's Elijah.
Elijah, okay. I was going to say it. Application of Elijah Karina...
Karivina.
Karivina, 85 Archer Road. And once again, this is going to be application two, first of all, and then we'll move on to application three after that, is 85 Archer Road, Chi-Lai...
Application one.
Hmm? What's that?
Application one.
Sorry, I meant to say two. His is two and three. We just did application one.
Oh, yeah, I know, lot one and two.
He was referring to...
Oh, lot one and two. I got you. Sorry. I was going off the agenda numbers. Sorry. I was going off of agenda numbers. Sorry. I should have clarified that. This is for a variance to a, erect an accessory structure attached in detached garages of 1,944 square feet where 1,200 square feet maximum is permitted, and b, propose side setback of 5.3 feet where 8 feet 0 inches is permitted at the property located at 85 Archer Road. And that, yes, as the board members alluded to, that's the proposed subdivision lot one in the R-1-15 district, so. Anything else to add, sir?
No.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
The only question I had is, so the application says 1,944 square feet, but on your plot plan where the buildings are, there's 1507 for the metal barn and 373 for the proposed garage, and that adds up to 1,880. I don't know how, why that difference is there.
See, the metal barn is 15 something?
Yeah, it's 1507, and if I add on the proposed garage for the proposed house, I add 373 to that, and it's 1,880.
So is that...
Oops.
Didn't that die less?
Just doesn't fit the application.
Right. So it's just the math. We're discussing the 1,944 square feet. Appears to be a miscalculation. Is that what you're asking, Jim? And it appears that it should be eight.
Something's changed. It's not on the...
It should be 1,880.
Yes, this is existing.
No, it's not about existing. He's asking about the square footage.
Yep. More than anything, to be sure it's accurate.
So that would be a difference of... 64 square feet somewhere. So eight by eight. Paul, I'm going to ask you, because otherwise, based on this plan, we would just reduce down the variance request down from 1,944 and minimize this to 1,880.
Except that the, I know the plans that they're using, so I took it from the plan that they're using the bill.
So it's not the one we have right here?
Right.
So what...
That's just something that they threw on there for...
Well, we also have a new one right now.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a new one.
Paul, what's the square footage you have for the metal barn on yours?
1507.
That's what we have on ours. And then for the proposed garage on the proposed house?
20 by 18.7, but it's not 18.7.
Okay. That would be where it is. So it's 20 by what?
It goes deeper than that.
So is it 20 by, well, it's probably...
You don't have the plan in front of you.
Have to be like 26?
Yeah, 26, or it'd probably be longer than that.
Yeah.
20 feet by...
Forget... About 20 times 4 feet would be...
64 divided by...
100.
Yeah.
Or 80, I'm sorry.
So it looks like...
26.7.
We're missing 64 square feet, Jim. So if we go 64 divided by 20, it's leaving us with 3.2. So that would bring it up to a 21.9 feet by 20 foot on that proposed garage.
Excuse me, I'm James Brown. He's got that garage and he's going on the new house?
Yes.
It's not going to be that big.
How big is it going to be?
It's going to be like a...
Not like. I want to know what is this square footage?
It's going to be 24 by 24.
24 by 24.
So they show it's big, right, on the new house. It's not 24.
Do you want to table this until you...
No.
I mean, is it even the right figure?
No, that's all it lasts, because he's already got two storage areas in it. He doesn't need to grow that big.
Right. Adam, if you take 64...
So that's 576. So that's even bigger, 24 by 24.
20, that...
Three, right?
Right, that...
Three feet.
Right. That's what I was doing, but if we go...
If you do a 20 by 24 garage, no. I have the plans back.
Attached to the new house, he's going to 24.
Time out. Time out. None of the numbers match up for what we're discussing tonight. The application we have in front of us is for 1,944 square feet. Then when we look at the plan that's depicted in the application, that adds up to 1,880. If we then assume the proposed garage for this third iteration to be 24 by 24, as Mr. Perna said, plus that metal square barn, that brings us above the 1,944, and it brings us to 2,083 square feet. Can't go with that, but with what Wanzanre, Mr. Wanzanre is saying, is you're saying to increase it by three feet there. So it would be a 20-foot wide by 21 or 22-foot built, so 20 by 22 gets us closer to that 1,944. Is that what we're looking for tonight?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so that's what we'll go with. That's how we get...
1,000 by 22?
It'll be 20 feet, just like you've depicted there, but it will be a longer garage. So instead of 18.7, it will be 22 feet. So it'll be 20 feet that you've depicted and 22 feet on the depth of the garage.
If the chairman wants to be exact, it's 21.9.
I had 21.9, so we're on the same page for significant digits. So that gets us to the 1,944. All right. Good question, Jim.
Excuse me, so you're saying when both garages on that lot, he can only have that many square feet?
Right.
That's what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that metal barn is existing or proposed? So therefore, the only remaining square footage you have to work with for that new garage is whatever the difference from 1,944 to 1507. The biggest you can go is the difference.
21 by 22.
I'm not even going to say what dimensions you're going to go with. You're allowed the square footage of that difference.
You have 444 square feet.
444?
Okay.
No, it's 437.
437.
You have 437 square feet.
Is what he's got enough to think he will...
Yep.
Further.
Yep. Because then we don't want to come back, because we have to be stricter on it, because that's what's been publicly noticed. That's what we're deciding on tonight, unless you wanted to table it to get more information for the next month's meeting. But you're comfortable with just going with the 437 square feet difference or addition that you're going for. All right. Jim, any other questions?
Nope.
Fred?
Um, no. As far as the side setback, I can say a question about that.
Okay.
Um, we couldn't move, we can't move that either way because we have the framed garage and we have the metal barn. We're trying to cut in between the two.
Yeah, the reason why this one's coming up is because of the subdivision line that's coming in.
That's the second one.
So that's letter B for this application. Yep. So that's what's shown on this plan is the 5.3 feet is because the new property line separating the lot one and lot two, you split the difference, 5.3 feet for the frame garage on lot two and 5.3 feet for the metal barn on lot one. And it's greater than three feet, so estate variance wouldn't be needed. It's a 5.3.
No, is there going to be a shared driveway?
No.
For that?
No.
No?
No.
Just the way I look from my drawing here is all clear. It's trying to be...
I think that's the existing. Because it's a single lot now, now they're making it two lots.
Okay. No other questions?
Phil?
No questions.
Side table, anything to add? I will make a motion to open the public hearing. Anyone here for this application?
Motion.
All right. Ask for motion to close. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second.
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the public hearing has been closed. One condition of approval for both of these, A and B, or yes, A and B, is that a building permit will need to be obtained. All right. And I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information and evidence presented at this hearing, find this application be a type 2 action and of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I'd like to ask for, actually, I'm going to pose it to the board. We want to do these separate or together? My eyes, they make sense to go together.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll do one decision on that. And ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval. So moved. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Board vote. Jim?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes. So you're all set on this one?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Well, don't go anywhere. You get to do the next one, too. Now we got to do lot two. That was just lot one for A and B.
Probably not involved with lot two.
Sorry, Jimmy. This is application three, Elijah Karivina, 85 Archer Road, Chi-Lai, New York, 14624, applicant owner for a variance to propose a side setback of 5.3 feet where 8 feet is permitted to the existing accessory structure at the property located at 85 Archer Road, proposed subdivision lot two in the R-1-15 district. Once again, this is over on the other side. Because of the subdivision, a building permit would not be required for this because it's already existing, so there won't be any conditions on this. Jim, any questions?
I do not.
Fred?
Aye.
Phil?
No questions.
Side table, anything? I will open up the public hearing for this one. Not seeing any hands. Ask for motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
The motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So as I said, there's no condition on this one. You're not putting any new buildings on lot number two. And I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information and evidence presented at this hearing, find this application to be a type 2 action of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I'd ask for a motion to adopt this application.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board vote. Jim?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so this one's all set. Now you're all set, Mr. Perna. Thank you. Have a good night. All right. Application number four, application of Joe Falone, 70 Quail Lane, Rochester, New York, 14624, applicant owner for a variance to propose 37.6-foot front setback where 40 feet 0 inches is required at the property located at 38 Christina Drive in the R-1-15 district. So as we discussed earlier, and it was admitted that it didn't get posted...
No, I think I admitted that I didn't know if it had been posted.
Okay.
When we were in the break, I called our intern and posted it. He sent me a photo.
Okay, good.
And after that, I sent, emailed it to Mr. Wanzanre.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember something. I was looking for it when you were talking. Like, I can't find it right.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I spoke with Mr. Falone after. He said it's not going to be used, so they attached it to the dumpster. I don't know the total chain of command, but I do know it has been on site. It is on site currently.
It's in a dumpster?
No.
I'm just joking.
Yeah, in the bottom of the dumpster, so no one shows.
Yeah.
It was there. It has been there.
The photo is all you needed to say, and that was good, so thank you for having that. So that's good advice for everyone, is take a photo.
Yes. What is your name? I'm sorry. My name is Mike Ritchie from Costage Engineering. With me is Tom Ritchie, surveyor from Costage Engineering, representing Falone Properties. So we're here tonight requesting a front setback variance of 2.4 feet. So a little backstory on that. We are the engineer and surveyor for the project. We prepared a plot plan for lot 613, 38 Christina, based on the homeowner's selected house layout. We laid it out and we staked it out. And then when the surveyors looked at the field, it was inadvertently put in the wrong spot. I should say, it's on a curve. And instead of putting an additional stake on the point of curvature, we basically just did two ends, so it made a chord, a straight line through. So when they built the house, it was shifted a little bit farther towards the road than it should have been. So that house is currently under construction. I believe it may be close to being finished, close to being occupied. And we were only aware of this when we did the final instrument survey for certificate of occupancy. So we talked with Mr. Wanzanre and Mr. Linsky, and they suggested, they required us to come in front of this board and obtain setback variance to allow this house. I don't know the details of it, you know, to achieve the certificate of occupancy so that people can move in and enter. So again, it is a portion of the garage which is impacted by this, the actual structure, the residence itself is all within the setback. And you can kind of see there, the front right corner of the garage is approaching on that, whereas, you know, by the time you get to the opposite end of the garage, it's being a fraction over there.
Yep, so the required variance covers both of those.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, the part that's approached would be 2.4.
Yep.
So it is our mistake. It's not, you know, I think the questions go, you know, was this self-inflicted? I don't believe this was self-inflicted by the developer. It was self-inflicted by his consultant.
You're all on the same team.
We made the mistake. We're here to belong to it and hopefully make it right. So I'd be happy to answer any questions they may have.
Okay. Looks like you're outside the easement, because that's depicted right there, so that's out front. Jim, any questions?
No.
No other questions?
No questions from Fred, Phil? Anything to add, side table? All right, I will open up the public hearing. And not seeing any hands for this application. Ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is there. I just, this one's under construction. Matt, should we put a building permit needed for the condition of approval? I don't think so in this case. Paul's shaking his head no, so it's like we have telepathy, so. I think it's all set.
They probably already have one.
Correct. And he didn't deny it. It was just a clarification that came in during construction, so. I will go ahead and declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information and evidence presented at this hearing, find this application to be a type 2 action of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt this application as presented.
So moved.
A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Board vote. Jim?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so you're all set. And thank you for bringing the photo.
Thank you so much.
All right. Now we're on to number five is the application of Greg Takoni, 37 Andonie Lane, Rochester, New York, 14624, applicant owner for a variance to erect a covered screened deck of a proposed 46.0 feet north secondary front setback where 60 feet, 60.0 feet is required at the property located at 37 Andonie Lane, the R-1-15 district. Good evening. All right. That. Got a bunch of photos, which is nice. And you're looking to do it on the north side.
Right.
Okay. Anything else to add, sir?
I'll be explanatory. Want you to see the pictures. It's going to be inside the vegetation area. That, the patio, is roughly 15 by 12, and I'm looking for 14 by 10, coming off the kitchen where the steps are.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
I do not.
Fred?
I don't know.
Phil?
No questions.
Side table, anything to add? I will open up the public hearing. Not seeing any hands. Ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One condition of approval is a building permit? And that's all we have on that. I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information and evidence presented at this hearing, find this application to be a type 2 action of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Now I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board vote. Jim?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so you're all set. So thank you for coming in tonight.
Sir, I mean, I want to build that car. Come by in a minute.
You got it. I'll take you up on that. Good luck with the porch. Enjoy it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Application number six, the application of Paul Burner, 6 Brook Valley Drive, Rochester, New York, 14617, applicant owner for a variance to a, erect an accessory structure, a pavilion, 20 feet 7 inches by 17 feet 10 inches, totaling 367 square feet where 192 square feet is allowed, and b, south side setback of 3 feet 4 inches where 8 feet 0 inches is required at the property located at 6 Brook Valley Drive in the R-1-20 district. Good evening. Just get to the plan. There we go. And that's where you're looking to have it, correct?
Yeah. Just one, one, and on the zip code is 14624.
I thought so. I just read it as it was on the agenda. Typographical error. All right. Anything to add on this?
Yeah, where your little 8-foot setback is 3.4, it's only a distance of about 2 and 1/2 feet, and then the rest of the building won't have over 8 feet in setback. I can have a picture if you'd like to see it.
Sure.
Bring it to you, sir.
Yes. I'll share it with the board. There's no one here from the public anymore.
So here's the portion that is not 8 feet, the rest of it is going to be...
Gotcha. Understood.
Yeah, like the back rail plant, it's the...
Rendering? Yeah, the rendering, the overhang that's on the side closest to the house there. Yeah, the rendering, the overhang that's on the side closest to the house there.
You are Paul Burner?
Yeah.
So he's talking about it.
So is that fence pre-existing, or are you gonna be adding that?
Yeah.
So where it is, you see on the plot?
Where it is on that, it's not quite drawn.
Okay. So where you've got it drawn on this map that I have up on the screen, that's not drawn to scale, correct? Meaning, this makes it look like it's closer, or it's farther away, because this is 28 feet right here?
Here's, you're probably just doing it for contractors.
So this.
I can point to it. So this is 28 feet from here, and it looks like that's greater than eight, but this, according to your rendering, is shifted over here, and this is where we're gonna be 3 feet 4 inches off of this.
Exactly.
Paul, is that your understanding as well?
It's kind of, I understand, it says south, I don't want to talk about, is that the south side? My understanding is what it's showing, I have no idea what Mr. Burner's talking about.
Well, as it's shown up there, he doesn't need a setback off the side.
Off the principal building.
The principal building off the side, off the south setback is 28 feet.
No, 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 no.
For the building.
Accessory structure to the principal building, sir.
This.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I'm saying it's not dimensioned here, but if I scaled it.
It's more like 15 feet.
That's not 3 feet 4 inches or?
3 feet 4 inches is from the overhang off the back of the house. Yeah, that's from the overhang, absolutely right.
Right here.
And that's where he needs the variance.
But that's not off of a side setback, that's separation from a principal structure.
If he shifts it to the side setback, then that's new to me.
The wave.
That's what I'm saying.
I got you. Yes, the, the south side setback is what's listed on the agenda.
Which way indicate the property line? Yes, yes. So what's, well, right.
And according to this, the section of code is 500-60A, location of an accessory structure, 8 feet is required and 3 foot 4 inches. So you're saying that 8 feet required is not in relation to a side setback, as the agenda says, it's proximity to a principal structure.
That's a fine kettle of fish.
So what, I'm just kind of asking you a question?
Yes.
What says 8 feet required?
Yep.
Are you talking 8 feet from the house?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, I called it principal structure, but yes, from the house.
Can you pull that map again? I thought you said the lot line. Can you pull that map up again?
So.
But it's only, like I said, it's a very small section, that's not.
So Paul is saying, it says. So they revised it, so that was, this didn't take into account the overhang?
Exactly.
And that's what his rendering showed, is this knocked off 2 feet from the original 5 foot 4.
Okay.
But the issue we have, sir, is the agenda was listed as letter B, a south side setback of 3 foot 4 inches.
Looking for.
That's.
From the main structure?
That is alluding to a side setback off of a side lot line, not off of the side south side. I don't like to use the word setback again, but distance from the south side of the principal structure.
Oh, that's kind of crazy, because the house, the front of the house is the east, the back of the house is the west, so we keep on going to the southern area, I get totally.
Yeah, it's.
Totally, doesn't make sense at all.
So it's, the, what it's talking about.
South, this is the south face, or the southeast, or southwest corner of your principal structure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Matt, question for you.
It's not noticed currently.
Correct, so we have to table it tonight.
I mean, the code is listed properly.
It already makes it 8 feet off the south, off the south property.
Right.
Right?
Yes. So.
Said it 8 feet off the south property line, everything.
So.
That it kind of defeats the purpose of what I'm trying to cover, aren't you sure this is going? I don't just, I don't know where. I'm just giving you way out, and I trust you, I'm really, I can.
So, so yeah, so if, well, we can't do, I apologize, we can't do an action to approve that tonight, because it wasn't publicly noticed. So we're going to have to redo the process for next month's meeting to, for that one specific. We can move forward with the request for the square footage, letter A, so we can move forward with that one, but we cannot move forward with the south side setback one, because that's not what was publicly noticed. But as, so this is to be fully transparent with you, is that one would have to be tabled for tonight. However, if you wanted to move this structure, and if we approved the one that was worded, you could move this to be 8 feet off the side, you would be 8 feet off of the principal structure. So this would be shifted in such a fashion that you have to be 8 feet from this corner, and you're allowed up to 8 feet on that.
So.
It's up to you at that point of terms of timing.
No, I understand a lot of this, but unfortunately, the contract engineer doesn't show up, and it's supposed to be there. I'm kind of like, okay, that makes sense to me, but recently, I guess that's up to them, maybe.
Well, the same.
I wish they could hear this firsthand, but.
The same packet, they can speak to me if they'd like to, but the same packet can be handed in. We would have to correct the public hearing notice of that. Yes, sir?
I gotta go get a skid. If he shifts it 3 feet 4.
Three.
Off the south property line, has noticed.
Yep.
Does then that make that, let's call it the northeast corner, does that pull it 5 foot away from his construction?
Oh, yeah. He's got plenty at that point. But it's whether or not he wants to have the additional materials to expand as his rendering shows.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a cover of that cooking area.
He's trying to keep it close to.
Yeah, but you don't, you understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
That if he went 3 feet 4 off of that south property.
Yep.
That negates the need for the variance off the principal structure.
Correct, and that's what I just pointed out there. But it's up to him of whether he wants to expand and move all that cooking area further away from his gathering place.
This rendering that we're looking at to expand all the cooking area, does that expand the area?
No.
It's still 17 by 20.
Correct. Correct.
The cooking area exist right now, or?
Yeah, that's already there, yes.
So if he moves that, it doesn't cover his area?
Right. That's what he's saying.
That's what he wants to do.
No, that's what I was getting at, is we can still move forward with the publicly noticed area variance request, but the dilemma's coming up of the side setback, as what you're saying, is if he moves it off of this side setback to meet that one, and if we didn't want to go as close as 3 feet 4 inches off here and want to minimize it, we're allowed to do that, but we can't do anything about this, because we didn't publicly notice.
I'm asking you a question. What if I was to rather than move the setback, just attach that section to the house?
What if he attached it to the house?
Yes, only if we're talking 3 feet 4 inches.
I don't even think he'd need a variance for the area at that point. If it's attached to the house.
It's an enclosed porch.
It's a, it's a wall with.
It's a covered porch, forgive me, right?
Yes.
Patio, right, at that point?
It would be an open walled deck.
However you want it.
Yeah, but there's no structure, it's just stone underneath.